The June 24, 2025 Regular Planning Commission Meeting is called to order. The time is 6:05 PM. Before we begin, Commissioners, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business during the meeting, please move for a recess. If you are participating telephonically, please mute your phone unless you are speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name for those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to attendees, this meeting is being streamed live. The camera is located in the back of the council chambers above the clock. Will the planning clerk please call the roll?
Thank you Chairman Seals. Commissioner Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Seals?
Present.
Commissioner Langel?
Present.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Present.
Commissioner Stafford?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Seals, you do have a quorum with Commissioners Brown, Seals, Langel, DeYoung, Stafford in the chambers. You're good to go.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner DeYoung, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your beloved and righteous citizens, to your government, to your government, to your citizens, to liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of business is approval of the agenda. Before changes are discussed, are there conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, if the commission would like to discuss anything under the consent agenda, such as the minutes, they need to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under new business at this time. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing no changes, the agenda will stand as presented unless objection is raised. Next on the agenda are reports. Do we have a report from the Acting City Planner Nygaard?
Thank you Chairman Seals. One of the things the planner and I, the planning clerk and I have been working on is to put a little bit of training in the beginning and share some tools and some things that we're doing in planning. So you're our biggest champions. You can kind of help the public understand some of our pain points. And Julia, you want to?
We help you log in?
What's that?
The login password is on the laptop.
Okay. Oops, am I doing this wrong? Presenter and the seat, this, this?
The long one.
Hmm, okay, never mind. So the first thing we wanted to share with you tonight is that we have a new webpage. It's got, it was launched on July 1st, and webpages are always great and they look modern. But there's a little bit of navigation that has to go, and there's a couple links that we're trying to fix. But for those that are wanting to know about specifically for planning, you'll see as you go down the page, you kind of have to hobble over this, I guess. Let me just go down here. So each of these, planning of course is at the bottom. But when you go onto planning, that will give you all the tools that you need as a, either if you're going to apply for a permit. So this would be the Citizen Serve portal. That's where you would actually apply for different kinds of permits that you're looking for. We have the City of Wasilla zoning district maps. Those are those, and they're, they're functioning quite well. This next 90 days, we'll be actually going back into various properties that have a permit associated with them, and those will link to those maps. So you will have that historical data available at your fingertips. And then we've also included different documents that we will be discussing as the years go on, or this year, specifically the Parks Master Plan, the Trails Plan. So if anybody wants to know where those files reside, they're on the planning page. And then we have a list of check, the checklist for the site plan. If you're going to build a multifamily or commercial. And those are all links that go right into the permitting process. And so one of the things we added was the most frequent asked questions. Does my property require a permit? One of the things that we do like about the new webpage is it's really mobile friendly. So we had an applicant in the other day that had their phone. They were trying to see what permits they had under their address. It was really easy to navigate on your phone. That is something that was not easy in the past. And so I'd encourage you all to go kind of play around with it a little bit. If you, if you find it to have some broken links or something, let the planning clerk or myself know, and we will make sure that we fix it. But we wanted to just demonstrate a little bit. When we go on to get a permit, it's always under Services. Development project is if you're going to have multiple lots, or Sun Mountain would be a development, or over by Home Depot. A permit is going to be something that you're looking at for a single family home or a duplex, or, and in the case of licenses, that would be like a mobile food vendor or short-term rental. You can also put complaints in there if you have a complaint about something in your neighborhood that you want code compliance to address, and then general inquiries. The thing to just remember is you have to have an account set up before you can enter a permit. And we have designed the permit, so it's got a lot of dropdowns. And since we live in the world of passwords, we'll try to see if I remembered mine. Otherwise Julia will have to come save us.
I got you logged into the admin side.
Oh, you did? Okay, okay. Well, let's see. Nope, that's not going to work. Okay. So just, this, once you set up an account, you can go in and you can submit your applications. And then they go immediately to the clerk to make sure that everything is in the packet. All the information that we need is compiled. And then it goes to various departments for review. And that's what we wanted to show is the review process. And so you'll see I have 158 in my queue right now that have to be reviewed in some capacity. And if we go to the bottom, you'll see that there are some unassigned ones as well. So you can see how busy we are right now. I mean, they're coming in, you know, probably five or six a day. And then we also have unassigned tasks that we have to go into every day and assign who's going to be on first base. So we thought we would just kind of show you how a final approval happens. This is a new construction. Oh, Julia.
I got you.
Gotcha, okay. Kind of like our phone or our home desktop where it's already knows it's you, logs you right in.
Whoa!
Get it.
Okay, we can apply for a permit now.
Good.
And let's also get you... For when we want to...
What's been really good about Citizen Serve is it, we can have multiple departments have accounts. So as soon as we approve something on the planning side, it goes over to Public Works to look at the water and sewer, or if they need a driveway.
Computer setup, the Zoom call's already activated.
So we don't have to go department, department with paper and get their approval.
If after 20 minutes no one's logged on, you just want to close the lid, you can do that. Yep.
Commissioner Stafford, we can hear you.
So when someone goes on and they're applying for a permit, say they want to do an administrative approval, it's purely a dropdown. So you can look if you want to sign a freestanding sign. You put in some kind of description, and then you just put an address in here. And if that permit is not allowed, it will come up and say, choose a different address. And so this is just the front part of it. And then we wanted to just share with you the back part of it so you can understand how integrated this whole permitting process gets. So if there's a permit that comes through, we have to see if there's any other permits associated with it. This one is for a subdivision. And then as we go through the review process, you'll see that planning will do a review, Public Works will do a review. Sometimes they put conditions in there, and those conditions actually are printed on the actual permit. We even have finance sign off on it, just so they, they know it's in the queue. And in this particular situation, it's a subdivision. And so there's probably a general contractor that will do a final approval and will send that. We also set up inspections. So if it's a new project, we'll set up an inspection that will come out in the spring and see if they're building exactly what the permit is for. This is where the repository for all the information that they upload into their file, the preliminary plats, which they have to have before we give a, before they go over to get a... We give them a subdivision permit, and then they go to the borough to do the plating because we don't have plating authorities. It also tells us if there's any violations that code compliance might have issued, any kind of contacts. We're working through this right now because in this case, you have a surveyor that has, is one of the contacts, and then the actual owner. There's various notes, and then we have files. So it really does allow us to have real-time information as people adjust. And so each month when we have, or twice a month when we have these meetings, this is where Julia will generate the reports. And we'll say, you know, what is our permit for, you know, so far for administrative? And it'll say 246 last year, 175. So this is kind of where our metrics lie. And one of the things that Julie and I talked about is finding metrics that matter to you and to the public, and has some meaning and relevancy to it. So that was our primary goal tonight, was to show you how to find these tools and to let you know we have upgraded the website. And it's not perfect, but it's better than where we were. And we're going to, going to, in a year, we'll be on the same platform as the borough, which is Tyler. I talked to their planning department last week, and we're going to set up some collaboration on what worked for them and what will work for us. So thank you for allowing us to kind of show you one of our tools. And I think next time we'll probably talk about traffic, how we get our traffic data.
Thank you.
Any questions?
To the chair, to the planner. Do Commissioners have access to this information?
No, but you can be set up for, with an account through the planning department.
Okay, thank you.
And as a citizen, you can always, a resident, you can go in and set up a portal. So you can see quite a bit of information in there, what's going on in the city as well. Any other questions?
Commissioner Langel? Just one thing.
We got to speak into it.
Okay. So I just wanted to say one thing to address sort of Commissioner access to permits and permit portals, at least on the administration level. One of the things that the commission has to balance that we don't see with council is that your quasi-judicial role. And as a quasi-judicial decision maker, it's very important that how you're presented with information is controlled so that we know we have a record, and that only what is part of that record is coming before the commission in an organized way where we see what the record is. Because if there's an appeal of a decision issued by the commission, then that gets taken into account. So to the extent there's an administration, a, a application process, and information kind of going back and forth with the administration, the administration should protect the commission from getting that information in another format than the record as it's presented before the, you know, the hearing. That's not necessarily true on state comp plan issues and legislative issues.
Right.
Or even rezones, which are legislative, which you know.
The only reason I ask is, is once we get a packet, oftentimes I have a lot of questions. You know me. And so I'm digging around, trying to piece a piece here. And we never have all of the information at what got us to this point. And that's the only reason I was asking, is that what this will be used for?
No, it's a great point. And it's actually, I think, a great training point, something that we should have in the future because that is such a push and pull. As a commission member, for example, you'll get an application, and sometimes the application won't have the information that you need. And that may very well end in a decision, a denial, where you might otherwise have had an approval. But it's the burden of the permit applicant to make sure you have that information and that that information is presented in a way that can make the decision that, that gets them where they're trying to go, you know? And that can't always happen, but that's, that's sort of the goal of the permit applicant is to, is to have their permit approved. And sometimes that won't happen because of objections by other neighboring property owners or because they just didn't submit the information in a way that you could process it. And that does, because they are in essence a party, the planner and the administration is often trying to help you get where you're trying to go. But they are also, they have, they're making a determination as to whether or not they think that permit complies with the law, the code, and is in the best interest of the city. And really, when I say in that best interest, they're limiting themselves to the law. Sometimes there's permits that don't have discretion, you know? And so the administration is saying, is that done? Is it that size? Does it meet that? And that is what they're trying to do often. But we have a comp plan, so the administration is also always looking at that. Is this promote development? If we're supposed to be promoting development in this district, those types of considerations.
One of the things we have done is went back to the provider and asked them if they have a complimentary system that has been used for, say, a council or commissioner that they can view. So it's, it's not, it's worth the time to ask them if other cities have made that request. And I will, I will make sure I ask them. It also brings up something that the attorney and I have been working on as far as emails and that, that policy and what you can say, what you can't say. And so this is just putting a little bit of a format around the, the whole information sharing world that we live in. So I appreciate those kind of comments so we can do our research. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a report from the city attorney?
No chair, no report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public participation. We are now at persons to be heard. A time for members of the public to share their views with the planning commission. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration, or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the commission or administration. Anyone wishing to step forward may do so at this time. With no one wishing to speak, the next item of business is the consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the items for approval under the consent agenda into the record?
Thank you Chairman Seals. We have meeting minutes for, the regular meeting minutes for June 10th, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as red?
Commissioner Langel, I so move.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner DeYoung, second.
Is there any discussion? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. We are now at new business. Will the city clerk please read the agenda item under new business?
Thank you Chairman Seals. Under new business, we have item one, RZ 2501, resolution number 2504, applicant Kim Kalmbach, rezone of Coring subdivision and two adjacent lots, including 16 parcels at and near 1191 North Lucille Street from rural residential to commercial. Lot area approximately 9.79 acres. Location, east of North Lucille Street and south of East Aspen Avenue in Wasilla, Alaska. Zoning, or current zoning is rural residential. There you go.
Thank you. Will the city please, city planner, please provide a report?
Thank you Commissioner Seals. So the applicant Coring subdivision, owner Kim Kalmbach, and the proposal is rezoned from rural residential to commercial. The 16 parcels are generally located east of North Lucille Street and south of East Aspen Avenue in Wasilla. Parcel size 9.79 acres. Existing zoning rural residential, future land use commercial. There is commercial north of this property, there's commercial south, public on the east, and rural residential on the west. Based on the findings in compliance with applicable criteria established in section 1616070 and 1616050 of the Wasilla Municipal Code, we do recommend approval of the rezoning request. You have a copy of the actual review in your packet. I wanted to highlight a couple findings that bring to your attention. The first is we look at the rezoning. This subject rezoning was initiated by a petition bearing the signatures of the owners of at least 51% of the owners of property within the area proposed to be rezoned. And you will find in your packet that they have signed in support of it. Also, the subject lots total the 9.79 acres and will be a logical integrated commercial area. We did look at if there were any neighborhood plans. There are no approved neighborhood plans in this area for the proposed rezone to commercial, and it is consistent with the consistent development zoning to the north and the south of the area. This rezoning substantially complies with the applicable provisions that we have in section 1616050 and 1620030, and those are not applicable. The proposed rezone is consistent with the character of surrounding properties and is not anticipated to result in off-site impacts or necessity, or necessitate changes to existing Title 16 or city infrastructure. And section, in question number five about the need for additional land in the zoning district to accommodate the uses allowed, we did find that the current designation rural residential with allowances for agricultural and the very low-density development is underutilizing the site's potential. It is located in the intersection of Lucille Road and Aspen Avenue. The properties sit on a relatively high-traffic corridor, making it more suitable for commercial activity. The proposed change would represent only an approximate .3 shift in zoning allocation, offering a minimal impact while aligning land use with the surrounding transportation and growth potential. You will see on page seven of your applicant, of your packet is the actual application that was submitted by the applicant with detail in reference to infrastructure as well as the use, intended use of the property. And based on our review, there's one other piece of information that we got after this packet was published, and we want to make sure that the public, as well as the Commissioners, know. That there is a recommendation that the fire marshal does a review on this current rezone. And so we will add that as a condition, that the fire marshal will review this plan. They do require for access, they do require 20 feet. We have 25 to go in, and they do require a radius that we have a two-foot allowance. But just to ensure there's no complications, we will require the applicant to meet with the marshal and show, and give us a copy of that approval. And so Julia, I'll give you this, a ta, this copy, and we can make sure the Commissioners and the public get a copy of that as an addition to the packet tonight. They have it in their packet? Okay, thank you. And that's all Chairman Seals.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on the application for rezon 25-01? Please write your name and contact information on the signup sheet. When you're finished, please state your name for the record. You will have five minutes to speak.
My name is Kim Kalmbach, and my name is...
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Kim Kalmbach, and I am the applicant. I did use Citizen Serve, and it worked great to do the application. But I'm only one of 16 owners. I'm the secretary of the HOA, and so my name is on it. We have more owners here who are going to speak about their businesses that are going on and their, you know, future plans for the area. And I just, I, I think it was well-stated by the Acting City Planner, a description of the area. And we had, of the 16 parcels, owners of 11 of those parcels signed the petition. And it's surrounded by commercial primarily, except for the cemetery on one side, and then Lucille Street. And across Lucille Street is rural residential. And there's not a lot more I can say. And I guess if you have questions... Finish writing this down. Thank you. Thank you for your consideration, and I speak in support of passage of this.
Thank you. Well, we have several owners tonight, so if you'd like to come up one at a time to speak on application for rezon 25-01. Please write your name and contact information on the signup sheet. When you're finished, please state your name for the record. You will have five minutes to speak.
All right, I appreciate the, the time and attention on this. My name is Brian Kersoferson. I own Heaven's Best Carpet Cleaning, which is on the corner of Lucille and Flag. We have been there for quite a while. We're looking for continued expansion into more commercial activity. The majority of the neighborhood is commercial. We're trying to keep it that way, so it's a, it's friendly commercial. We're trying to keep it that way, so it's a, it's friendly, commercial friendly. We'd like to, we have some anticipation of expanding our building and expanding our operation. Currently, we do rug cleaning there, which we're hoping to turn into a larger section of business, which would increase the Wasilla city tax that would be coming from those customers where we're cleaning directly in the property. I don't have a whole lot to say beyond that. We enjoy this location. It's got great street frontage, and we anticipate staying there, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the landlord.
Um, there'll be a ton.
Huh?
Time?
There'll be a time. They're gonna speak, and then you can ask your question.
This is not a question and answer period, but there is one coming up. Any other owners of property in this rezon like to speak? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Cliff Buzzwell. I'm one of the landowners in the Coring subdivision, and it's a, it's pretty much a commercial area. The building I own is a commercial type building that's leased to a garage door company, which is pretty commercial, and it seems like that would fit the area and the way that the subdivision's developed. And I guess other than that, that's about all I have to say is thanks for hearing us, and I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Are there any other owners of subjected property wishing to speak? The public comments portion of the public hearing is now open for rezon 2501. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Anyone wishing to step forward may do so at this time. Greetings, councilman.
I'll fill this out afterwards. Kind of limited on my mobility, might take 10 minutes to get that, so we'll do that. My name is Stu Graham. Commissioner Seals did recognize that I am a city councilperson for the city of Wasilla. I am not here representing the city council, I'm just here representing myself as a private citizen and a citizen of the city of Wasilla. In general, I support this rezon. I mean, Lucille has blossomed from when, you know, the Coring subdivision was put in many, many years ago into a totally different avenue now, and will continue to grow as far as the amount of traffic on Lucille there. So this property is certainly in an area which would be beneficial, you know, for persons to develop commercial properties. My only concern, and, you know, perhaps during your deliberations, you can answer this, is, you know, I think five of the property owners did not sign on to the petition. So when the property is rezoned, if the property is rezoned from rural residential to commercial, the reason it's rural residential right now is because there are residences there, okay? And so then we changed the zoning from rural residential to commercial. What happens to my residential property if I decide I want to expand that property? You know, do I now have to comply with commercial zoning regulations, which mean I need commercial on the bottom and residential on the top? And if that is the case, you know, would that be a taking of my property because now we're no longer allowing the property to be developed in the way that it was purchased? You know, purchased under R1 zoning here? I don't know the answer to that. I'm sure the planner and the attorney know the answer to that. My only concern is, you know, typically when we annex a property in the city, we try to get 100% participation, and without 100% sign on, we don't annex those pieces of property. And here, we don't have that 100%. This is not an annexation, this is just a change in zoning. I just want to make sure that nobody loses, you know, the property for the intent for which they purchased it. You know, I'm familiar with the properties, I've driven through it several times, I've known the Coring family for many, many years. And, you know, it's, it is your typical, you know, rural residential area, you know, and I just don't want to see people that have been there for many, many years lose their ability to further develop their property along the rural residential standards and be forced to adopt commercial standards, which could be significantly different from what they're doing now. I know generally, planning commissioners don't drive through areas to take a look at properties, but this is a nice area. Like I said, it's perfect for commercial zoning there, but I think we just need to make sure that we're not depriving the property owners of any rights that they, that they currently have, and in effect, coming up with a taking of their property because we are, you know, not allowing them to further develop their property under what was R1 zoning. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm gonna sit down over here.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in the public comments portion of the hearing tonight? With no other public comments, the public comment portion of the hearing is closed. Does the applicant have anything else to address?
No, just, just that we'll, I didn't acknowledge the fire marshal's requirement, and we will deal with that. That shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you. Now, may I have a resolution to either approve or deny application for rezon 2501, resolution serial number 25-04?
Chair? Just to add to that, based on some of the recommendations I heard, you may want a motion to approve, subject to the condition that...
Good point.
That it is approved by...
Sorry, I was just reading.
Sorry, that's just, and that's just an option. There's also straight approval or...
Okay, I will take that back. Now, may I have a motion to approve with conditions of the fire marshal being addressed for application for rezon 2501, resolution serial number 2504?
I would just amend that to say conditioned upon a non-objection from the fire marshal, the Central Matu Fire Department Fire Marshal.
I'd like to amend my last statement. Thank you, City Attorney Wells. Now, may I have a resolution to approve, under the conditions of fire marshal approval?
I would say, and I'll just say it, and you can say, you know, you can just refer to my motion, and then we'll get it in the minutes. A motion to approve, subject to the condition of a non-objection issued by the Central Matu Fire Department Fire Marshal.
Yeah, what she said. Looking for a motion.
Is there gonna be discussion?
Yeah, it's coming up. If we have no motion, we're not gonna discuss anything.
I so move. Commissioner Landshill, I so move. I heard the attorney worded it.
Do I have a second?
Commissioners, Commissioner Stafford, I second. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Okay, it has been moved by Commissioner Landshill and seconded by Commissioner Stafford to approve application for rezon 2501, resolution serial number 25-04. Is there any discussion by the commission?
Chairman Seals?
Go ahead.
Upon reviewing Google Maps, since I've been told we're, commissioners aren't allowed to go on the property and see what's there, I did research using Google Maps showing the current use, and it's been a while since I've been in that area, I'll admit that, but I was very surprised to see the current use, even on Google Maps of the property. The existing uses of several of the properties appear to violate current code for RR and potentially even for commercial. And just like the compliance officer said, he felt it would be better to rezon it industrial. Well, I looked at that and compared industrial, commercial. It will not go into industrial, at least in my opinion. So at this point, we're looking at rezoning it to commercial. My biggest concern is, does approving this rezoning overlook potential current and future code violation and concerns of neighboring property owners, which in my estimation, several of them do? Should we request an inspection and report from the city, acting city planner and code compliance officer prior to proceeding with this rezoning? I don't know if I should make a motion to that, or...
Well, one thing, we want to be careful. So what you're in essence saying is I think there's violations on these properties, but we actually don't, the commissioners don't start there. We're not, we don't start at, why drove by and I think there might be a violation, right? Because violations on properties involve property rights, and so we have to have very clear procedures for dealing with that. I think if you drive by and as a citizen, you see what you think might be a violation or just as a person, then you raise that with the compliance officer. The compliance officer, just as they would for the public, says, "Thank you, we do have a citizen complaint process," and then they go and they look, and if there is a violation, they will issue a notice, and then the person, the property owner, has a right to due process that is triggered by that. But we don't have, this is sort of a innocent until proven guilty. While we're not dealing with criminal realm, we're dealing with the property realm. So we really need to start from a place of unless we have violations reported on those properties, do we have violations reported on those properties or do we issue notices of violation? So, and I, this is a separate process, but I think that, so I, so I guess to put you your, you at ease, because I think I understand what you're saying, we have a process for dealing with violations. If there are violations occurring on that property under the code right now, then they are subject to a enforcement order process and can be prosecuted. If we change then the zoning, then they will have to comply with the procedures for those zonings. If we didn't catch a violation, then there is a violation, then that violation got missed, yeah, right? Like that a violation is not, but now, but if they would be in compliance now, they're in compliance now. So I, I think that's the best way to answer. But as the commission is considering a rezon, you know, I think you're really looking at a rezon is not about the individual property owners so much, because if we're considering them too much to the detriment of the public, we're spot zoning. So we always have to balance that, under the common law, rezon is really, we have to consider public, good, and the way that the code, the code knows that, and the way it incorporates that is in the criteria, right? Does it comply with the city's comprehensive plan? Does it, is it what you want to see? Is it consistent with the neighbor, the neighborhood plan and the neighboring areas? All of those questions are all designed to get at that, to make sure we don't end up with illegal zoning.
Well, the only reason I bring that up, because I look at these half acre lots, and the first question that comes to mind is, is a half acre, and does the planning department, have you looked at this and made the determination that half acre lots are large enough for commercial parking, for commercial driveways, for commercial buildings? Are we allowed to consider that, or has that been considered?
While she's looking that up, I would add that we, part of the rezon process is that public notification. So we did, we did mail 179 property owners within a 1,200-foot radius on June 6th, and also 32, 32 review agencies it went to. And then we advertised in the Frontiersman as well, June 6th. And so there's a, a number of different channels for the residents to provide their comments. The other thing that I would say is, the reason to keep your comp plan updated is so you can strategically see this growth coming. You can provide the infrastructure that you need, and you can hopefully get that engagement from all of the residents. But we have smaller lots here in, in downtown than up on Lucille, so we actually have some lots here around City Hall that are a third, like, third of an acre or less. And the challenge there is, is a well in septic.
And that was my next question. How many of these, from what I've been able to glean just from rural records, mappings and whatnot, these properties are served by a community water system, but yet some of the lots are showing a well in septic. So my question is, will these, if we rezon them to commercial, be, water be supplied by the community well, or the city going to go in and put in water, or is it going to individual wells?
I would like the applicant to, Kim, do you want to address this, the community well?
So, we have a community water system, yes, but we will eventually be needing city water as we expand. And as far as half acre lots, DEC says you keep 100-foot separation, you can have an onsite well in septic. That's DEC rules. And, yeah, I don't know why you can't have, I have little lots in downtown Wasilla that are 9,000 square feet. I have like two houses on one of them.
But on city water?
Yes, on city water and sewer, yes, yes. Yeah, but community water and city water are, you know, the same, so we have one well. So, yeah, we, and city water is right along Lucille there, and city sewer is right along Lucille, and it just makes sense that we would eventually get city water and sewer.
And is that the plan for the subdivision as part of this rezoning?
We are looking at, it wouldn't be immediate, because I don't know how many years left we have on the water system, but yes, we would like to bring city water down Flag. And then as far as sewer, I'm not real sure about that, but yeah.
I think you could apply for a grant for both.
Yeah, DEC has grants. If the city will take over our water system, DEC even has like forgivenesses and things like that.
There's lots of avenues to get to that.
Yeah.
But I, I don't, I don't feel that that is detrimental to your businesses at this point.
Right.
I do have a question for you, though. So all the lot owners in this subdivision, the entirety of them are on, all these lots are under a homeowners association, is that correct?
14 of them are under a homeowners association. Two of them are outside the subdivision. One of the two is owned by the same owner who's in the subdivision, okay? He owns two lots, okay? And he signed.
Yeah, and I noticed that.
Yeah. Yeah.
All of the landowners in this subdivision were contacted by the homeowners association in this matter?
Yes, we did it, I did it. I, I actually reached out in person to the person outside the subdivision on the corner there, and she was real noncommittal. I'd hoped if they didn't want it, they would tell us and show up here, but there, as everybody knows, there's people who, there's the people who don't participate and those who do. But we did get like 70% of the land acreage signatures. So it was a big amount of the actual land, we got like, I'll tell you right here, we got percentage of property area is 71%, so six point, almost seven acres out of the 9.8 acres. And then percent of owners, percent of parcel owners, 11 out of 16 signed, which is 69, 70%. And percentage of individual owners is, because some people own more than one, 8 out of 12, 67, so close to 70%. It was over 51. And I'll just say that I own property in downtown Wasilla that I've had since the early 1980s, it's in a commercial zone. I've used it as residential with no problem, and it's tiny lots. I, I have one of them as commercial, and some of them, a lot of them are residential, and nobody's ever told me I had to change it or do anything. And honestly, and I'm, I'm not supposed to overshare, but the worst problem that I've ever had with the city is the landscape coordinates, okay? That's all I'll say. All right? And if you have any other questions?
Commissioner Langill, do you have any other questions?
I guess to the planner or to the attorney, is it, is there potential, I am also like the councilperson, concerned about the people that's been there in an RR, in their home for several decades. Do they have grandfather rights to remain RR?
No, a rezon works, it's a map rezon, right? So that will change the districts. When we look at, so there is something, it's what Councilmember Graham was talking about, or Citizen Graham was talking about, was a regulatory taking. It's when you make a regulation that changes the rules, that then diminishes and decreases substantially the value of someone's property. This, when we're looking at cases, when you're looking for those regulatory taking cases in the zoning realm, there are more often, what you're going to see is not a taking that occurs because you changed to commercial from rural residential, but one that occurs when you change from commercial to residential. So, and it's really the value of the property, right? So, and, and especially in Wasilla, when you look at sort of your density requirements, for example, that don't prevent you from having residential in commercial, but you would have, the density requirements, they get smaller as you go down, right? So there's no limit in commercial. It goes to 1 in 10,000, or one dwelling per 10,000. And, and one dwelling per lot for an R1. So 1 in 10,000 for R2, 1 per lot for R1, no limit, commercial or multi-family RM. So you see that, how that would happen, it would get very restrictive. And then what you would have is grandfathered rights for how you've developed your property, right? So if I have, if you were going the other way, so we, we don't have a great example going to commercial, because it's expanding uses, not restricting them, but if you were, say, going down to R1, and I have two buildings on, two dwelling units on my lot, now we've rezoned it to R1, and I have an extra building, you know, right? That would be grandfathered in. But the person who is in an R1 with the two buildings, maybe they were going to put a third building, or maybe, you know, so now their use of their property has been restricted. Again, though, they have to show a real tangible decrease in value. So here, I don't see that as a risk because of the way we're going, but it was an excellent point. Whenever we're looking at rezones, it is an important thing to consider. And most of the time, the more restrictive you are being, the louder your public comment period will get, because people will, you know, people understand the importance of their property and its value.
And is residential use is allowed in commercial, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, not all residential.
Subject to the provisions of the district use chart, district use parameters.
Commissioner Brown.
Go ahead.
Yeah, to the planner. As we are going through the process of rewriting our comprehensive plan, does this predict any conflict that might come up as we write the plan?
To Commissioner Brown through Chairman Seals, we, we looked at that, and because there's commercial on two sides, it, it, there is a component of adjoining, or if it touches a similar zone, then, and the word is contiguous, if it's contiguous to that zone they want to rezon to, then it, it creates an eligibility for them to do that. So they've got commercial on two sides. And we, we are seeing that commercial moving up away from downtown, especially the relocation of some of the small businesses that are coming from other parts of the state, and they're looking for, so to Commissioner Langill's point about parking and landscaping and signage, that's part of the, even though we say commercial, there are, there are parameters there that have to meet based on the use. So if the commercial use required based on the number of, the type of business they would have, then we would tell them how many parking spots they would have to have. So that's just part of the process. Just because they're in commercial, they can't do anything commercial, it's within that specific use for the signage and the parking and the landscaping.
Question to the planner. Since this is before us with the current code and current comp plan, once the new code and comp plan goes into effect, will this subdivision fall under the new code and comp plan? Because there are some differences, especially on commercial.
This rezon, it's easy to think of this rezon as applying to the applicants, but it's important for us and for the commission to step out of that. This is a change to the zoning map. This is a change to the zoning districts, right? So when Title 16 is, it will, now that area, as proposed, will be, if approved by council, will be rezoned commercial. And so any of the provisions regarding commercial, the commercial district and what is permitted and how it's permitted will apply equally to that area. We are changing our line to the extent there's grandfathered rights or interests, it's just as to what has been built on that property, because it was built in compliance with the law at the time of the law. So it will be required to comply, and there is, a rezon bears the same risk as any other property that will, will again be rezoned. You know, for everybody in the city bears the risk that at some point, we put an overlay district over a certain area, you know, or we decide we want to zone this in some distinctively different way. We don't often see that in comp plans. We're not usually shifting entire zoning districts because land has been developed. You know, Wasilla's not so new that we're rezoning something without a lot of impact, you know, but it'll be just like any other parcel. It'll be just like a parcel in one of those commercial districts with which it is contiguous.
Commissioner Brown, did you get your comments addressed?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, thanks to the planner.
Commissioner Stafford, do you have any comments?
I do, you know, similar to what Commissioner Langill mentioned at the very beginning, I noticed a note from the city code enforcement officer that said, even with the zone change, she still spotted things that would be a violation even as a commercial property. I think equipment stored outside is one noted specifically. And so I, I just would hope that the applicants would realize that a zone, you know, changing to commercial doesn't mean they get to do whatever they want, and the city code still needs to be followed regardless of how they're zoned. And so that would be my only concern, is it sounds like even the current residents need to pay a little more attention to what they can and can't do according to the code. But that would be my only comment.
Thank you.
Chairman Seals, would you like to make a motion?
We have a motion on the...
Well, I'd like to amend the motion.
Well, okay.
Just the clerical things. On page 96 of 91, D3, it needs to be corrected. Right now, it reads lot. And it should read plural. 96, let me make sure.
Why only goes in 91?
Page 86, I think.
Page 85.
You're on Exhibit A.
D3 finding, the lot, it says the lot. It needs to be changed to plural, plural. We're rezoning a group of lots, not one lot. Page 86.
86.
D3 finding.
Got it.
Okay.
Well, it's your motion that's on the table, so you could amend it.
Well, I'm making a motion to amend the finding.
And I'm, and I'm, yeah, and...
So we need a second or a dice?
We have a motion on the table right now to approve. Okay, so...
So I think, I'm trying to think through this parliamentary procedure here, that when you apply it to rezones, it's already, they're already a unique animal, and then it gets more unique. But I think what you're trying to do is make sure the planning commission's findings reflects the planning commission's findings, which is great. And so you have a motion on the floor to approve, subject to a condition, and that's been seconded. And so it's a motion to amend...
Main motion.
The mo, main motion. I think that's appropriate. The city clerk may kill me, maybe I'm doing this wrong, I'm no, I'm no parliamentarian, but I think, so the motion to amend the motion, which was an amended motion, is to strike, or to add the word, the letter S, and strike the word has, and replace it with the word have.
No, 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 it says the lot, singular.
Right, she's saying lots have.
Has, appropriate, so it would go to have. Okay, so to add an S and strike the word has, and add the word have on page 2 of Exhibit A of the resolution.
86 of 81.
Yes, so the only thing, so for me, I think...
The amendment doesn't, doesn't add or take away from the motion, I think it's a, not a legal amendment.
Yeah, it's a typographical error, so it's, but are there other?
Yes.
And, so we'll just add them to and.
And, same page, D5, the finding, delete located at the intersection of Lucille Road and Aspen Avenue, the property sits on a relative high-traffic corridor, making it more suitable for commercial activity. Replace with, access to the properties is available from Lucille Street, a well-traveled corridor, as well as Aspen Avenue and Flag Circle.
Okay, so we have choices. We could have taken each amendment, a motion to amend, so we can take each of those as their own and then vote on them, and then go back to the main motion. So we can do a motion to amend the existing motion with the lots, adding the plural and adding the have, and then take a vote on that. A motion to amend finding and... This is going to help us. A motion to amend finding number 6 on page 86, but I think it's best to refer to the pages in the resolution, we are working with the resolution now, okay? So on page 2 of Exhibit A to Resolution 25-04, to add an S and delete has and add the word have. Would Commissioner like to make that motion? You can say the motion just...
Commissioner DeYoung makes a motion to add an S and add the word, delete had and add the word have.
Motion to amend the existing motion.
Amend existing motion, under findings.
And now, let's take a roll call vote on making that amendment, the motion, please.
Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Langill?
Yes.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Stafford?
Yes.
Okay, so that is, now there is a motion to amend the original motion to delete from low, finding, or to delete a portion of finding number 8, starting with the word located and ending with the word activity.
She started with 3.
3 is the lots. The next one is finding 5, D5.
Yeah, but that's finding 8, and I actually numbered the findings.
Oh, I see what you're doing.
So, but under number 5, that's fine, that was probably a better way to do it. Now, under number 5, deleting from the word located to the word activity.
Correct.
And adding...
Access to the properties is available from Lucille Street, a well-traveled corridor, as well as Aspen and Flag Circle.
Okay. And then we take a vote? We have that motion, is someone making that motion to amend the original motion? Okay. Second?
I'm just looking at it going, ah! Fine, I second it.
Okay, Chair, take it away.
Clerk, will you please call a roll call, vote?
Commissioner Seals?
No.
Commissioner DeYoung?
No.
Commissioner Langill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Stafford?
No.
Now you return to your original motion.
So, it has been moved by Commissioner Langill and seconded by Commissioner Stafford to approve application for rezon 2501, resolution serial number 2504. Will the clerk please call for a roll call vote to approve application for rezon 2501, resolution serial number 2504?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner DeYoung?
I have a question for the chairman. Is that with the condition of the fire marshal?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Langill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stafford?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Okay, one second.
I know, it's not on here.
Yeah, okay.
We can wing it.
Well, with an ununanimous, but... Well, with an ununanimous but, uh, over fifty percent vote, then the, uh, application for rezone twenty-five oh one with the.
Resolution serial number twenty-five oh four.
Resolution serial number twenty-five oh four has been approved.
As amended.
As amended.
Matter of condition.
As amended with conditions.
Resolution is as amended.
Okay.
She's bringing you some words.
When this is reported to council. The board is executed. I wanna know why. That language, okay? I know we're not supposed to have that.
Right now.
No, no, just.
Okay, I, I understand. Okay, moving on. There is no unfinished business, so we move directly to communications. We are now at communications. Are there any comments on the communications item as presented? Which would be permits and licenses issued, log enforcement, code violations, and the Matsu Borough Planning Commission agenda.
Chairman Seals, if you don't mind, can the clerk read those specific dates into the record?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, okay, so for permit information, we have permits and licenses issued to June fourth, twenty twenty-five through June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Enforcement log, code violations, June fourth, twenty twenty-five through June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. And under the Matsu Borough Planning Commission agendas, we have no new agendas.
We are now at audience comments. Time for members of the public to share their views with the commission. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the council or administration. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission? With no one present, we now move on to comments. Acting City Planner Nygaard, do you have any comments?
No, Chairman.
City Attorney Wells, do you have any comments?
I am gonna make some comments just about rezoning in general and making sure, was it one of the things that, and I know you all know this, one of the things that is in Title sixteen is a revision to rezoning that makes sure the process is a little cleaner and it makes more sense and it's in its legislative box. It's a very hard process to navigate because it feels like a hearing. Feels like it's a quasi judicial hearing. It is a legislative operation where you're, you're looking at something and either making a recommendation for approval or denial. So I, that is something that, um, as we, if Title sixteen does pass, I think one thing we, we wanna do together is come up with a calendar. This goes sort of to Commissioner Brown's comments regarding training, where we walk through different procedures and learn everything about them and what they mean and how we navigate them one at a time. So we kinda break down the mechanics. But I want it, before I, we go off and start planning that, I would like to hear the commission thoughts on that. If that's something that's overkill or if that's something you think would be helpful.
Chair Seals, um, I think it would be helpful. And so I would recommend to my other commissioners as well that it would be helpful.
Commissioner Langel, I agree.
Uh, Commissioner Stafford, yeah, we couldn't, we can never be too much educated.
Oh, yeah, we can.
Yes, we can. Commissioner DeYoung. I think this sounds awful, but it would be interesting. Just being honest.
Uh, Commissioner Brown, do you have any comments this morning?
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Keer. Um, uh, to the city attorney, thanks for your input tonight. It was very helpful and I think we do need to take these step by step and learn this in-depth process and how these work. Other than that, you guys have a good morning. I will do the same.
Thank you. Commissioner Stafford, do you have any comments?
Uh, I wanna thank the public for coming out.
Has left.
I wanna thank the applicants for coming out. I don't know if, uh, Councilmember Graham is still there, but I always appreciate it when the council can join us in our meetings. And just thanks to the staff that puts in all the hard work on this stuff.
Thank you. He was just a regular citizen this evening, not a council member. I wanna make that clear on the record. I did it non-ashen.
Yes, and.
As a council member, but that's just how I know him.
Yes, thank you. I, I meant to say to this thing, Graham.
Thank you, Commissioner Stafford. Uh, Chair Seals, uh, the comments I have tonight, I appreciate the fire marshal stepping in at the last minute. And, uh, the presenters seem to have no problem with dealing with the fire marshal and his approval on this. Um, in these types of situations, it's always sad when not every person is here to speak. Because even though they, um, from what I gathered with what, with the notice that the city put out and the effort that the homeowners association put into play, um, we didn't hear any of the other owners in the subdivision tonight have any comments about it. So, um, as far as, are we doing the right thing for the public?
I don't know.
The future will bear it out, but I think we are. And I think the way we covered this tonight um, protected the community as well as hopefully the other lot owners in that subdivision. And that's my only comments for this evening. With no further business at hand, I'm adjourning the meeting unless objection is raised. Simon's already gone, so that ain't gonna happen.
Well, I had a question. I mean, I just had a comment, so skipped us.
You didn't get us to for comments.
I thought I got away with it.
Well, I don't really say much most of the time, but I.
I apologize.
I am very, I, I almost said no because.
Commissioner DeYoung, go ahead.
I'm very, I'm curious why a commercial person wouldn't sign this. Like, I wanna know why Kurt Owen didn't sign and he wasn't here to talk, so I can't ask him now. That, that puzzles me a lot and it's gonna bother me. That is, that's just my comment. And he owns two lots in that subdivision. What's the problem? So did we do right by the public tonight? I don't know. That's just kind of my afterthought. And I kinda wish I would have been with Brown and said no.
Me too.
But it's too late.
Well, we can reconsider.
No, I.
I don't know what the reconsideration rules are for the commission. I would have to look at that. Although one thing, you know, I, I, one thing I would say is you had people show up here tonight and they were in the room.
I know, I was dying to see if one of them was him. Are we allowed to ask if they're in the?
You said no comments.
How many people live in the city of Assala and how many people show up?
I know.
It's generally speaking, you know, people show up when they care about something in theory, right? And if they don't show up, I don't know. This is not quasi judicial, so.
Where are those people? I don't know, maybe it was him.
So I think that when you're looking at rezoning, you're looking at, what is the most interest of the property? You're looking at city comprehensive plan. You're looking at, you go back through the findings, right? You look at what the provisions are that are under the code and you go through the criteria. And all of those criteria are what you considered and made. Those are your findings that you issued as a commission. So I, I mean, I, I can look at the code. We can take a recess, I could look at the code and you could reconsider. But then I think you put out notice and you start up, you know, and that's, you've really closed the public hearing. People have left, so you have very real risk when you had people in this room with an interest who did show up to talk to the commission.
Right. Well, is there any reason, you guys, why we have to decide something today? Like, can't, can't it wait? I mean, I'm just curious, can you postpone?
Yes.
I don't think what you, it depends on what your reason is. If you're postponing because there's a name on a thing that's been responded.
He, he made me give, he gave me pause because, you know, you have to think about something like this. Why didn't everybody sign? Like, I know Lee Mitchell well, I know his building, I know he would, you know, it benefits heaven's best, it's a, but did it benefit the turnbowl's that have been there forever and ever? I don't know.
And I think the commission always has, reason legislative, so the commission always has the ability to not make a motion or to, you know, a motion might not be made, it might not be seconded. Uh, you also have the ability to, unlike quasi judicial, so this is very dangerous in the sense that this is one area that is legislative. This, and when you're working on, say, the comp plan.
Can you abstain?
Kinda do your own research. You can look at what you want to, no, you, uh, well, you can. Planning commission members can if you think that you have a partiality. If you think that you.
I don't, not in this case.
So you have, there are bases under which you don't require a vote. You recuse yourself, but they're all, uh, conflicts or bias based.
Oh, no.
And, and.
Remember, though, you can go to coun, this is just the commission's recommendation and we'll go to council for the actual decision.
Right?
So that's, you know, to the extent you. I mean, I, I think, I do not encourage commission members once they issue a vote to go.
I'm not gonna change, I just, you know, it gave me, it gives me pause. Just, you know, we're talking, we're not.
No, and I understand your dilemma because that was why I asked her the questions that I did.
Which I appreciated.
Was everybody contacted and did it? So, but we went through a period in our, in our meeting where we, we, we checked the boxes. We had time for discussion. We actually amended a fairly simple motion into making it a medium comp, medium.
We did.
So, um, I think the public had an opportunity to speak. They have, I'm pretty sure they have an opportunity to speak before the council. So what we did tonight was recommend, so.
Okay, well, okay.
There is another step in this process, which is the city council.
And.
And I'll look at the consideration process for the future.
Go ahead, Commissioner Stafford.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but, um, I, in my opinion, an interested party not coming to make a statement is making a statement that they have no input. And there's ways, they can, they can then comment to the city before the planning meeting. They have opportunities to speak up. And if they're not taking that, I think that makes it, that their statement is they don't care either way.
Yeah, I mean, that's true because they could have made comments. Um, they could have sent the notification back. They could have protested and.
They could have been here tonight.
And they could have been here, and maybe they were.
Yeah, so, uh, at this moment, I, we're still on comments by Commissioner DeYoung.
Oh, well, okay, so my last comment is, just so, just so I know.
Bringing us back full circle.
In the future, full circle, is they kept saying they had eleven owners. No, they don't. They had eleven lots where they only had.
Several.
Seven owners, but they owned lots. So is that, do we count that as a, as an, as, as an owner? You know what I'm saying? The lots, or do we count the people?
I looked it up in code and it's the owner, lot owners are what, because that's.
Okay, and that's how you count them. So if there's twenty, if there's someone that owns twenty lots, that's twenty owners.
Yeah, they, they have twenty.
I just wanted clarification because I thought, well, I don't know.
And I think part of the reason why it's defined in that way is just because I wanna do X on one lot doesn't mean I wanna do Y on the other lot. Maybe I live in this lot and I, it's beautifully entreed and on the other lot I run three Airbnb's and I, you know, so I think that's why you see.
So would you not sign? This is education. I, let's, I'm done with my comments. I just, I'm asking questions. Well, so, let's just say that's a thing. Like, you have ten acres over here where you have horses and you wanna do industrial on these ten. So can you sign on these ten and not on these?
Yes.
Okay, okay, cool. I didn't know.
Commissioner Langel, do you have any comments this evening?
I guess I'm confused. The only reason I had amendments to this is because what we passed never mentioned East Aspen, which has access to these now commercial lots. To me, that needed to be in this resolution. I'm getting used to you guys not liking me being nitpicking and that's fine.
I didn't care.
My other bigger concern is looking at this city. You had people sitting here saying they're in violation. They got commercial, they put in commercial and we're allowing that. Now we're making it commercial now or are they gonna put in industrial? We have no controls.
What?
Two gentlemen said their lots, buildings are commercial.
But remember, there are conditional use permits out there. There are got, uh, grandfather.
Heaven's best has conditional use, yeah.
Do not presume a violation.
Yeah.
Unless one has been found.
Yeah.
So that's just.
But in, in.
There's a lot of ways that things happen on commercial.
Yeah.
And, you know, that would not.
But if you look at the Google map, and again, you know, it's been a long time since I've been up there. I think this is embarrassing to the city. These are supposed to be RR. They look like junkyards, heavy equipments on it and the city is not controlling it. So we're still in the wild, wild west. It, it just bothers me. I thought that was our purpose in a comp plan, the planning commission, to ensure that this city proceeds with rules with the best use of land for our residents. And we're not doing that. We're really not. Just my personal opinion, not soon a comment I have.
Thank you. With no further business at hand, I'm adjourning the meeting unless objection is raised and Simon's already gone, so. Hearing no objection, the meeting is adjourned at si- seven thirty-two.